This conference will now be recorded.
Serve and protect us, often at their own peril. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, for so many thousands have fought and died to create and preserve for these two hundred forty-seven years. We ask your blessing and protection on our military and civilians serving our country today, here and throughout the world, protecting our way of life from threats from without and sadly from within. As we enter this time of year called Advent leading up to Christmas, let us remember the reason for this season, a tiny baby born in an obscure little town somewhere in the Middle East who changed the world. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again, and this is prayed in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
All right, one nomination, Mr. Mayor, United States of America, and if you're a public or which it stands, one nation under God, individual, whatever it is that has to do with it.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
First item we have on the agenda is approval of the previous session minutes dated November twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion regarding the approval of these minutes? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes approved. Under unfinished business, we have a matter from community development. We'll go ahead and give Chairwoman Foster the floor.
Thank you. So we'll be discussing again granting a special use permit for Twilight Motors. Again, the owner of the property at two oh four East Twenty Fourth submitted an application for special use permit. The property is currently zoned as C one local business. Over the years, the business being conducted, the location has progressed to its current use of selling used automobiles and carport structures. C one local business zoning allowed for previous business use but not allowed for current usage. The original, the owner originally requested rezoning, however, staff recommended that a special use permit would be more appropriate in this case. The special use permit will allow them to continue with their use as is without opening up the neighborhood to potential later uses that would be more detrimental to the fabric of the surrounding residential area. The PNC Commission reviewed the application and they as well as staff were given approval. At the last meeting, consideration of this item was postponed to this meeting. The discussion in the committee meeting giving rise to the motion to postpone was that even if the special use permit is approved, the carport that was constructed on the property did not need the setback requirement. The owner of the property has been made aware of this and was working with the vendor to get the structure removed. However, the last meeting had not been moved, so we opted to delay consideration to this meeting to allow for more time to bring the carport structure into compliance.
All right. Call for the reading of the ordinance, please.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, two twenty-five. An ordinance granting a special use permit to Nicholas A. Delphi for a car dealership business on property located two oh four East Twenty Fourth Street in the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second.
Any council discussion regarding any motion and a second?
The carport is moved, right?
Yeah, everything is now.
Yeah, the H was being moved also.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, two twenty-five. An ordinance granting a special use permit to Nicholas A. Delphi for a car dealership business on property located at two oh four East Twenty Fourth Street in the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final passage. Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this ordinance? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Any dipstains? I'm related to one of the employees.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Seven yes, one abstain.
All right, ordinance passes. Now we have a roll call of our standing committees. This is a new business. First is Finance Administration. Chairman Marshall, you have the floor. The only item I have on my list tonight is discussion for turning our two-year term into a four-year term for council members. So let's open this up for discussion. Before we go ahead and have council discuss this matter, I was asked by a couple of council members to put this on the agenda. We'll go ahead and have our counselor Todd Smith take us through this and some of the finer points.
Very good. The term length process is defined by statute seventy-seven point zero three zero. A city can go from two to four-year terms. Those terms become effective at the next election. So if this were to be approved by the voters of the city of Sedalia, it would not be retroactive. But if you want another term, or anybody else in that matter, after the change became effect, they would have a four-year term. There is a deadline. Put this on the April second ballot. It needs to be passed by this body before January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. There is particular language that appears on the ballot. That language reads, shall the terms of council members, which are currently set at two years in the city of Sedalia, be extended to two years for members elected after the relevant date. So you can legally make that change. We just need, if we're interested in doing that, we need to get it on the books before late January.
All right. Any council discussion regarding this, pros and the cons?
I would stand in opposition of our terms extending from a two-year to four-year term for the fact that the Missouri House of Representatives is a two-year term and it works for them. United States, our U.S. Representatives have a two-year term and it works for them. It allows us for us, it allows for us city council members to stay active in our community, to make sure we're doing our job appropriately and effectively. And so to move it to a four-year term, I don't see a benefit for that. That being said, with the language that was in our minutes, having the option of giving it to the people to vote, I will never deny them an opportunity to vote on what they want their city to do. It wouldn't be something that I would vote in favor of.
Mr. Mayor, there was one more point. Forgive me for mentioning it. In any event, the council did want to do this, a point would be made to maintain staggering that for various reasons is advisable, such that you wouldn't have both board seats up at the same time.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in favor of this because I believe with our mayor's term being four years, that first two years as a new person, that first two years, you're really just starting to learn stuff and then you go back in and you run again. I think it would be easier for, as a cohesiveness, everybody on the same page for a limited amount of time and being able to get things through and approved. You need that extra time, or at least I feel like you need that extra time of the four years. Understanding that, of course, it's going to be staggered, just as it is now, but every four years, I would be in agreement.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I have thirty-six names here in the third ward because I am running again this year. I brought, when I go get signatures, I ask questions. And the questions I ask, would you, how do you feel about that? And they say, well, I think that's a great idea. And then I talk to staff and staff said the same thing. Give them an opportunity to learn us, we learn them. I've been on the, and it's not because I haven't tried, I've been on the council for a year now, a little over a year, and I still don't know everybody out there working and people I need to talk to about certain things. I have to go to Calway. So once we learn our job, you know, you're, the first year and a half, you're learning your job. So, and there's, there's stuff that previous councils did that I may not agree with, but I have, I have no, I still don't know the ins and outs on all that because those, there's too many questions to ask. And so I just, that's why I brought this up. You know, like I say, I talked to my people in my ward and they said they would be in favor of that. So that's, that's why I brought it up.
I tell them for a four-year term, I think you have more people in rest just than running. Two years is just too short. A mayor is, is four years. President of the United States, four years, and why not?
I'm on the fence about it. I see pros and cons either way you look at it. I think that gives states some tax hundred dollars because we'd have fewer elections and.
And training.
Well, and the training, although a lot of that stuff does change yearly, so we still would have to attend those, but I think that two years, you, kind of like what Tina said, you're just getting your toes wet. And even if you're very involved already, you still, gosh, this is my fourth year and looking back the first year, it's like night and day what I know now, what I knew then. But having two years, I think that it keeps council members more connected and accountable because you are more forced to stay in contact. If you're doing your job as you should, you should always be in contact, but that's not always the case. So sometimes it's better to have a little more pressure than staying involved. So I'm on fence. I think that maybe it might be interesting to see what the voters want because that's who we work for, so.
I'm opposed to it right now. I'm kind of the same way though. If we put it to a vote and people have a chance to choose it, but I, I believe really, I think a friend of mine that I was involved in politics a lot named Joyce Dowding, and I brought up with Joyce one time term limits, and he said, term limits are in effect now. We vote for people and that's how term limits should work. So in a way, to me, this is, we are at a point now where we vote for people every two years. That is a similar to a term limit type of situation. And I think it's, I think Tom made a good point, you know, state, we mirror the state, we mirror, we mirror in a way the federal government, and we need some part of the legislation process of turning every, more quickly than the mayor does. If everybody turns at four years, if there are things that are going on that the public isn't in favor of, I think it's going to be a little bit more difficult for them to run candidates that support their views and get those people in. So right now, I'm, I don't want to deny the people a chance to vote on it, but right now, I don't think it's a really good idea.
The local government is the most efficient form of government. We should just make sure, something on a state level takes months for things to turn around, and a federal government takes years to turn around. We could leave a meeting tonight and by the time we get home, we've got somebody on our doorstep telling what we did wrong. It only takes the next meeting. So we always need to remember that, we need to keep our taxpayers, our taxpayers and our voters in mind and make sure we stay as efficient as possible.
I'm really proud to be exactly what I am, a city councilman, for that very reason. We are the closest form of governance and we're still there from our constituents. And both sides are fun and, and the right way to govern, I think.
I did reach out to the middle league to ask how many, I tried to find a list of how many cities our size had four or two-year term limits and they, not term limits, but yeah, there, we couldn't find a list, so we were just, Ramon and I were both searching to try to find, and we found that there are quite a few that do have four years. So that was interesting, but I wish that I had a harder number on that, but it seems like.
Are they larger or smaller than our city?
We tried to find a comparison that's very close, but it's, like I said, there's not a list. There's a lot of things that they did a survey years, years ago, but it was, it was not relevant now. But I thought that would be interesting. But there were quite a few. We did find quite a few that were four years.
I guess I would say, you know, and again, this is, to me, is a purely policy decision for you all to decide. So staff has no opinion on it, we will give none. But in answer to that, I would remind that we are probably the largest non-charter city.
Yes, I mean, you're, yes, exactly. And that is the biggest thing we found.
Yeah, so the charter cities are all over the board and so, but what Todd just read to you is for third-class cities, so third class can be two or four, and it takes a vote of the people to change.
And that's a really good point. We did find that when articles would pop up about communities turning into charter cities, much more often they were going to a four-year when they went to, so, but we don't have hard statistics on that, but it just, that popped up more frequently and we were kind of surprised by that.
Well, I'm just going to throw this in there. I see two county commissioners sitting out there, they will verify. You want to compare to what everybody else's, our county commissioners, when they're elected, is for four years. So, you know, I don't compare, I'm not comparing what the state does because that, like Brad Pollard, he, you know, if he's in for two years, he's here, you know, talking to the people, but he doesn't talk to everybody in his area. I've been all over the third ward trying to get things done and, you know, when I walk up to people, they just look at me like, who the hell are you? You know, I'm, I'm trying to help them and I want them to learn. And whenever I do anything, I'm in for the long term. I mean, anybody knows me knows it for thirty-four years, what I've done for this, for our kids in this community. So I'm just saying, I brought it up, my opinion is, let the people decide. If the people want it, we'll be it. But if not, we'll stay with the two years. So let's, let's give them an opportunity to say yea or nay.
I agree with that.
Councilman Robinson, do you have something?
Yes, I'm, I'm not for it. I think that you don't, the, working on this is not accumulative knowledge. You, you have an opinion about what's happening at the time and you express it. And I don't think being on for twice as long helps. Now, that, that said, if you want to, if you want to be on for four years, then you run again. That's the option. And if you've done a good job, then you're elected. If you're not, then you're not.
All right. Anybody else? So what I would need in order to put an ordinance together would be a motion and a second from the council, and then we'll vote it up or down whether or not we're going to go ahead and put an ordinance together or put this on the ballot.
If I make a motion that we put this on, put it together, put it on the ballot and let the people's voice be heard.
Thank you. Any council, further council discussion regarding any motion on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No, no. Jason, can you pull the council, Robinson?
No.
Oldham?
I'll never deny a vote to the people, so yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
No.
No.
So you have six yes and two no.
Okay. What we'll do is then we'll go ahead and prepare an ordinance to bring that back to you at the next council meeting that would then, that ordinance would place this item on the April ballot if it passes. That is all I have. All right. Thank you, Chairman Marshall. Any further discussion? Next we have Public Safety. Chairman Robinson, you have the floor. We have four items, two of which come from the Fire Department. Chief Irwin will start and I'll give him his option of, which one's best first?
Good evening. I believe we're going to go over the reporting software first because it has an ordinance that follows it.
No. Strategic planning is the first item on the agenda, and then the agreement is the second.
I read that wrong, I apologize. Good evening.
I mean, if it makes a difference.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, okay.
It doesn't make a difference to me. Got the little clicker here, sit on. All right, good evening. Welcome to my strategic planning. To begin with, we're going to look back to look forward. Some of the important statistics from the Sedalia Fire Department are in front of you. Basically, we are forty-two point three increase, percent increase in call volume since two thousand seventeen. Our EMS has increased forty-six point six percent. Non-EMS is thirty-four point two. Big number that I want you to pay attention to is, is our overlapping incidences. Since two thousand seventeen, that's averaged at seven point eight two percent, but this year alone in two thousand twenty-three, we've had a twenty-three point three eight percent overlap in fire calls. And what that means is, is that I've got an engine out when a second call comes in and we are responding to multiple calls at one time. I went through the numbers and about six times, we had all three of our apparatus out on call simultaneously with a call pending while we were out. So another note that you need to pay attention to is our response times are increasing. We are forty-two seconds above where we were in two thousand seventeen, and if you look at the two thousand twenty-three number over there, it puts us at four minutes and four seconds. We are four seconds over our required response time for fire calls within the city. So our turnout time is basically from when the time when we get the alarm to the time we get on the truck and we move out the door, we've actually decreased that time nineteen seconds. So overall, we have about a fifty-second increase in our response time. Our fire prevention, our inspections are up a hundred and four percent. We do pre-incident planning, we do seven hundred and seventy-five of those annually. Our hydrant testing that we are now doing, our training is up two hundred and fifty-six percent. We are close to thirteen thousand hours department-wide in training, averaging about three hundred hours per person for the Fire Department. I am moving, if anybody needs to stop me and has a question, do so. I'm, I'm trying to, there's a lot of stuff we have to go over. So the important takeaway is for, for the Fire Department is our call volume is up, our overlap is up, our response times are up. Our support services, our training requirements up, everything is up across the board. So why is that? Community growth, growth, more construction occupancies and more people, more people, more incidences, more buildings, larger land areas, longer response times. It takes us longer to get there. More occupancies, more fleet plans and more disciplines, that's our high angle, that's all of those things that we have to do add to our training hour. So what does it mean? Although community growth is extremely positive and valuable to us as a city as a whole, if the community growth outpaces the department growth, then we decrease our quality and effectiveness as a service. So what do we need to do? We need our capabilities need to match our demand, increasing stations, increasing apparatus, increasing staff and adding training facilities. We need to be better at our job. When you look, I believe it's the next one. So when you look at our stations, the bottom corner one over there is currently our run boxes for both the headquarters and the central fire station. The central fire station was rehabbed about five years ago. It is due for replacement. And we've added in the possibility of adding in the six hundred and ten acres to the southwest of the city and then the central, central station rebuild behind the current central fire station to add the training facility behind it and the three acres that are sitting there. ISO requires that our training facility have two, two acres dedicated to it. It cannot have a station on it, so it only makes sense to be able to put it on the wedge. So why does, why do station locations matter? And I talked with the city administrator about this. I actually, you know, had reservations about showing you this, but this is why it matters overall. The stat you see in front of you is from time of a modern fire versus a legacy fire. When I started with the city of Sedalia twenty-six years ago, the bottom large timeline is what I had from time of call to the time that I was going to be in a flashover. It's well over almost thirty minutes. Today, it's three minutes and twenty-eight seconds. We have a four-minute response time. So we are putting our firefighters, our city staff, our employees in residential structure fires at about the same time that it's going to flash over. So that's the reason why we need to look at staffing, stations and being better prepared for these, these, these new, new houses that we, we have. They have so much flammable material, they are not like the legacy homes. So let's look at our apparatus. So squad implementation, we have it expected to come this year. They should be here in April. One of them will be here in April. It will aid with our overlapping calls. I did run some numbers today, just, it wasn't on here, but had we had a, had a squad in service at the headquarters station in two thousand twenty-three, it would have saved just over a hundred runs on our ladder truck. Our ladder truck made a hundred calls, that was the second due out on an overlapping call. That's a hundred trips that that eighty-one thousand pound truck didn't have to make. That's what, that's what the squads will benefit. It'll take about six hundred calls a year off of each of our engines if they're making that first due call. So our engine is expected in mid-two thousand twenty-four. We're actually hoping it's the second week of March, it'll, or, yeah, March, February, sorry, second, second week of February. We are recommending that you possibly look at ordering another one. It's a three-year delivery now on all fire trucks with an average of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year increase in that truck, and we base that off of what our truck is right now. If we were to, if we were to order the same engine that we're getting in February today, it's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars more and it hasn't even been built yet. Our aerial apparatus, we need to order one, inspect and order one this year to keep up with what the three-year delivery date. Truck two, believe it or not, it will be fourteen years old if, in three years when the new ladder truck is delivered. And then our brush truck is greater than twenty years old. I bring this up to let you see this. So NFPA nineteen-eleven is our underwriters, it's also part of our ISO. Frontline apparatus is supposed to be a maximum of fifteen years old with reserve trucks of twenty years old. The column down the left is what we currently sit at. Our engine one, which is our newest truck in the fleet, is five years old. Engine four is a frontline truck, because you all remember, we got rid of engine two, we sold that truck because it was a lemon and it was costing us a lot of money. That unfortunately moved engine four, that truck is twenty-one years old. Truck two is currently eleven years old and the brush truck is greater than twenty years old. And then our reserve engine three and truck one are thirty-one and twenty-six years old respectively. So if you add three years for delivery of a truck, those are your numbers that you're looking at for the age of trucks. So I recommend an apparatus replacement, delivery of engine two, purchase of an aerial and brush truck. This is what we would look like in three years if we were to order and purchase a brush truck. The brush truck, although I'm not necessarily sure that it would take three years because of the cabin chassis that it's on, we may be able to get that sooner. It was about, I think we're going on thirteen, fourteen months for the, for the squads. It's the same cabin chassis that we're on, so. And then that would move our truck two to reserve. It would be the only one that's less than fifteen years old on that list. It would, the gold one on engine three is the oldest truck in our fleet. It's thirty-four years old. I have a little bit of fondness to that truck. It was the first truck that I got to ride out on when I, when I started, so I love that So staffing, support personnel. As we move forward in training and all of the things that we have got going on in the Fire Department, I've explained the thirteen thousand plus hours that we're going to have by the end of the year, we gave up our training officer, if you will, in lieu of an inspector. We brought on an inspector. That inspector has been worth his weight in gold. We are now inspecting every occupancy in the city every year now, where we were doing it every other year. So we've increased our inspections with that inspector. Problem is, is that we are running behind on our training. We are overtaxing both myself and my deputy fire chief because we're the ones that are in charge of doing all the training, so we're looking at bringing in a full-time training officer, preparedness officer. Down that list, you'll see everything that they were in charge of training for. We would also, part of our strategic plan is to have that person start a community CPR program, or possibly once a month that we have the public come in and do a free CPR class for the public. As I was explaining to city administrator there for a while, it would seem like I was getting a phone call every other day with somebody in the community looking for a CPR class, looking to get training in CPR just because they wanted, they wanted that knowledge. And we have the capabilities to do that, I just don't have the staff really to do it. This person would also be a liaison to our EMA. He would be in charge of doing all the disaster preparedness for the city of Sedalia. He would be in charge of setting up and working with EMA for our tornado preparedness. If we get hit with a city, having a plan of action for that. If we have a train derailment, we have a plan of action for that. All things that we have that they are outdated and we need to update them, he would be doing that, as well as grant administrator. In the last few years, we've been awarded a number of grants, two AFT grants, a couple ARSO grants, or an ARSO grant and a couple ARPA grants through the state, to the tune of about a half a million dollars is what we've been awarded money-wise from grants. There are more grants out there. I would just like for him to be able to, be able to do that on a full-time basis. Bottom part of that is the position still exists within our structure, although we filled it with a, with an inspector, the position still exists as a job description. So that was one of the things that we're going to try to work on and get through the city administrator to get to you guys. So when our, when our squads get here, on the left side of that is our current staffing model. It's, we have a ten, ten-person minimum staffing. Engine, the engine has four persons, both engines have four personnel and our aerial has two. The second person on that aerial is our battalion chief and he's a shift commander. When the squads come in, we are going to have to move to a twelve-staffing model, where we have to add two people to each shift. That will put, and we are going to drop one firefighter off of each engine to fill a squad and hire two additional people to fill the other squad. So that, on the other side, is going to be what our staffing model will look, will, should look like. So our total increase So, that, on the other side, is going to be what our staffing model will look, will, should look like. So, our total increase is going to go from thirteen to fifteen. When we, when we do bring on that third station, we will have to increase our shift personnel by a total of nine, three per shift, to add an engine to that new station if we, when we go to the third fire station. So, I bring that up to show you this. So, this is pulled straight out of NFPA seventeen-ten. This is what NFPA seventeen-ten says we have to have on a residential structure fire. Seventeen, or fifteen personnel are required, seventeen if we, if we throw a ladder. This is what the NFPA recommends us doing for every residential structure fire. If you look over there on the right, on the right side of it, for a medium hazard would be your apartment complex, they want us to go to twenty-eight. And for a high hazard, which are your, your Walmarts, your hotel bathrooms, anything that's going to be, they want forty-three. That's more than my fire department, as it sits now, so we will never make the forty-three. I mean, we could, it's just going to, it'd be a lot. So, you can see on the, on the slide what those positions fill and what each person fills on those positions. This next slide shows you what we don't fill with our current staffing model. So, when we go to twelve, the green X is what we would fill with the, with the two additional people. And we've been in discussions about doing a call-in crew, having three personnel available twenty-four hours a day to come in on any fire as a second alarm. Currently, we don't have that, we do do call-ins if we have a fire, but this is going to be something that we're trying to work out, that we have people dedicated to come in. If we need them now, I've got to call them, and if it's Thanksgiving night or it's Christmas Eve, those people may not be available because they are out of town or they're with family and friends. This is going to give our people the ability to sign up for days, and they're available on those days. With those three people, that would give us our fifteen personnel on scene by the call-in crew. I want you to also note that what we don't staff is not less protection for the post people, that the citizens that we're protecting. What we take out of that is, is the protection for us, our protection. It is the rapid intervention crew, those are the people that go in and get us if we get trapped or we get lost, and our backup lines. So, we don't take anything away from the citizens, we still do victim search and rescue, we do fire attack and all of those things, we just choose not to staff those other positions as it sits. So, the training facilities, this is a big one that we, we, we put in a grant for, we've also discussed. That actually is what this training facility would look like. Better training, safer and efficient, what we currently have is a, one small Conex box that is not stamped and certified, so we can't do any state certification training in it. This facility would give us the state certification to be able to do our live-fire training. So, what, what councilman Oldham was at the fire station day, we have, we have six new hires that started today. The fire one and two class that has to go in, so when we do their state certifications, we have to bring them out of town to another facility because we don't have a stamped training facility. So, we have to go other places, even the colleges class, we have to take them other places to get their live-fire certification. Gives us realistic training, large-scale scenarios, it does have some potential to the police department, they don't know it yet. But the walls and everything can be moved, it can be changed for their shooting simulators, I know they have the little, I want to call it a pellet gun, but it's not. And it's valued to the region, it not just benefit to the Sedalia Fire Department, the city of Sedalia. It could help our county partners, our local fire departments, Lamont Green Ridge, all of those places, bringing Warrensburg, Marshall, Clinton, all of those places can come here. And if we do it correctly, we can start doing state-sponsored live-fire trainings and bring people from all over the region to our facility. So, it is a pretty big deal. But the building as it sits right there is approximately one million dollars as it, but it does have four live-fire facilities? It has four different rooms, so we can actually light a fire in four different areas of that facility and get all kinds of different training for it. And, and put it out, that, that is correct, and put it out. So, fire hydrant improvements is another thing that we've been looking at, since we've taken over the, the testing, flushing, and certifications of the fire hydrants. We have noticed that we have a lot of unserved, underserved areas. And then on the two pictures that you're looking at, if you look at, and I can't even read it anymore. I don't know what street it's on about, but you can see where the greens, on the bottom picture, the green fire hydrant at the top, there's nothing below it, down to the next block. Those are very long lays for our, our supply line. So, we'd like to add, look at doing that and adding hydrants in, in our underserved areas to, to, for better fire protection. We're willing to work on that to try to figure out exactly how much that is, or how much, how many of those are. Our EMS improvements, we come to you guys, it seems like every year. We're still looking, we tried to look for grants for UTV with the inclusion of the new state property, Katy Trail, a lot of out property. We had an instance this year even with the, was it the thirty-mile run where we, where we were going to need it, we had to use the police department. But if it's somebody had gotten injured, we had no way to get them off the trail for that matter. And then the other initiative that we're looking at is the ballistic vests and NCI bags. Those NCI bags are mass casualty bags, they have tourniquets in them. Currently, we have tourniquets and, and trauma bags, but we can effectively only per bag effectively treat two patients per bag, so we could, we could effectively treat six patients. With these, we could do bleeding control of up to four people, we want to put four bags in each truck. We want to bag- Yeah, the small, the small one that have CQs, those are tourniquets. And when I, when I showed this slide to the city administrator, the ballistic vests and helmets, we do have some ballistic vests, thanks to our partners with the Sedalia Police Department. This one is, is pretty close to me, and I don't like to say active shooter, or mass killer, or whatever, I don't like to put that out in the public. But a fire chief friend of mine in Maine, I had a very pointed conversation with him. If you remember the Maine shooting that just happened here two months ago. I have a friend that's the fire chief, he is the first to mutilate company to that fire station on an automatic aid. He was on the scene before their trucks got there, and he had to put a tourniquet on a twelve-year-old girl. After the conversations that I had with him, it's, we didn't think it was going to happen here, we didn't think it was going to happen here, and it happened here. And if it happens here, we are grossly unprepared, as far as I am concerned about stopping bullet wounds. So, we've been discussing this with, I know ballistic vests are expensive, but those ballistic vests are to protect the people that are going in, my people that are going in to, to help on an MCI or an active shooter. And then last but not least, community involvement. We looked and looked and looked for, for grants for Freddie the fire truck, there are just none out there, we're going, again, going to try to look for some. We're also looking for a digital sign to put in front of headquarters like, that's at the Hecker. We have about ten thousand cars going east and west in front of our fire station every day. MoDodge traffic count's got it six going one way, five thousand going the other way. For every community involvement that we do, every, for the fireworks, for the downtown, we feel that that would be a great place to put a board for signage to, for everybody that, the ten thousand cars that go down at daylight to, to know what's going on in the city and what's going on in the fire department. We want to invest resources in our First Do Community Connect, and I do have a presentation on that, the First Do Community Connect, and I will get into it in the other presentation. Basically, the reporting software that we're going to be coming to you to ask you to, to allow us to purchase has a Community Connect portal on it. And what it does is it allows private property owners to put in their house, basically put in if they have any autistic children, if they have any special needs children, anything like that, they can put it into the system. And when we get a call to that house, it comes up on our system as an alert. So, if you're using oxygen, you have dogs, you have ammunition cans, or things that you want the fire department to know, it comes up on our reporting soft, this, this reporting software. It also, it allows for businesses to do it as well, it is outside of our normal occupancy thing. But when the business puts it in there and he put, they put all the information in there, if we get called to that address and then the system recognizes the address, it will send an alert to the business owner that we are responding to that address. We don't call them, it does it automatically. That is something that they so choose they can do. It's not something that would be required, but it is something that we are going to try to push to our citizens to be able to, to do that. And then off-duty personnel for our special events. Currently, we do a lot of things with our, with our on-duty staff, you've seen them at the fireworks and all of those things. We are trying to get more and more off-duty personnel to come into these special events. The call crew, the three-on-call crew people would be able to fill those off-duty positions as well. And then there's a whole list of pictures of things that we do off-duty, of course, the, the fireworks. You have the balloon festival down there, the truck and tractor pull that we do every year, and then just our regular everyday things that we do. And I moved that, through that very, very fast, and I apologize, I was really hoping somebody would stop me and tell me I got a question, because that is actually the end of my presentation.
Today is the first day for your ten-week academy.
Yes, and that, that ties into, councilman Oldham came by and saw, we had six new hires start today. We brought those six personnel in, a lot of them did not have, well, four of them did not have, all six of them technically don't have their fire one and two program. So, we worked through, we took one of our instructors, put them on eight hours for the next ten weeks. We are putting those six personnel through our fire one and two academy, they're going through their probie book. And in ten weeks, when they come out of that class, they will have everything they need except for their EMP, but they will have everything to go fight fire. They'll have their probie books completed, they'll have their fire one and two completed, they will be able to start the job in ten weeks. They will still need to do all their testing, that is correct, but in, in ten weeks, they should in theory be ready to go. And if we've done our job correctly, and I think we will, it, the, the test is just a mere formality. But councilman Oldham got to see, see that, the benefits of having an instructor there, eight, an instructor there every day to teach those people, to work with them, they were out doing calisthenics today, they really hated us for that, but. But yeah, all six of those, those employees started this morning at eight AM.
That would be very interesting to have a part two in the strategic planning presentation, after your ten-week academy, to hear what successes and what some of the things we need to work on were. And since it'd be in the middle of budget season, what we can add to it to improve and increase that.
I will absolutely get on the calendar for week eleven, because we actually have the, the courses scheduled for ten to twelve, in case we have super bad weather or, I, I don't even want to say this. If we have a very large fire, that will take away from that, because we're actually going to, we've already told our students, our employees, they're not really students, they're employees, that they would be allowed to come out, see how the fire ground works, and do some ancillary tasks out there, but we would not let them fight fire. So, we've given us some cushion on that timeframe, but as soon as, as soon as we're done, I will absolutely come back and let you know how that went. And I'm sure I missed something, did I miss something?
I may have missed it too.
Okay, I'm just going to hang out here if that's all right.
We need authorization for some new search software.
Yeah. We'll get that one turned up here. So, record management systems. What exactly is it? This is our reporting software that we do all of our incident reports on. It's also what we do all of our inspections on, it's what we do all our events on, it's what we do everything at the fire department on. Other than scheduling, because our current one doesn't have that feature that we use because it's barbaric. So, we currently use emergency reporting, that company has since sold, and now is under ESO. So, why do we need it? So, the United States Fire Administration requires the city of Sedalia Fire Department to report to INFRS. It's actually, name has changed, but basically, we have to report all of our, all of our incidences on an annual basis to INFRS. We do it every month, because we found that if we wait longer than a month, then we have a, have a, the chance to lose data and we don't ever want that to happen again. But if we accept a federal grant or a state grant, we are required for up to three years to reply, to, to report to INFRS. So, it's not something that we can just turn off. Why should we have it? Customers, quality RMS not only serves us, but it does our legal requirements, but improves our service to our customers. It helps our staff with safety and efficiency, especially when, if we go to the new system, where we see all of our hazards, and, and I will show you some of the, the great stuff that this new software will do. Record retention and documentation. This is all the ways that we use it. Fire hydrants, inspections, analytics, events, the new one is for scheduling. I won't read everything. We currently use ER, but it is changing from NIFRS to NEERIS, sorry, which is the National Emergency Response Information System. They want to change acronyms, I don't, I guess it gives somebody a job in the government. ESO, our current reporting software, will not support it, so we are going to be required to upgrade our systems to whatever ESO gives us. And this is who we looked at. We looked at ESO, which is our current provider, they're going to go up to fifteen thousand dollars annually and a four thousand dollar implementation. And from looking at it, it is exactly the same thing we have right now. It is nothing different in it, and it is, it is very difficult. We look at Tyler Technologies, because that's what our police department uses, and that's what the county uses, and that's what everybody uses, so we really wanted to look at that. Problem that we found with Tyler Technologies is, is although it has a, a very large implementation time, everything is third-party through Tyler, so nothing really talks to each other without doing a number of things. So, then we, we kind of settled on First Do, these are, by the way, the three, basically the top three that, reporting softwares. It's going to be nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars annually with a twenty-five hundred dollar implementation. The twenty-four thousand dollars is for the fifteen-month implementation, it takes us about three months to get onboarded. So, you will have an, what?
Does that include nineteen-two and two thousand and five, or is that an additional point?
So, no, so it's, it would be a total of twenty-four thousand for the fifteen months. So, what First Do, so, we went to First Do and we kind of negotiated with them because budget starts in April. So, we, we are getting the first, January, February, and March is what's tied into that fifteen months, so that we can do onboarding with it, we can get all of our stuff over, we can do our training, we can get all of these things set up, so that we have a go-live in, in, end of March first to April. Because not only do, do I have to learn it, but my employees have to learn it, because it's all the report management systems and all of that. So, that's who we considered, and this is why we went with them, this is all the things that you can, you can get from, it's got the little star over there, it shows you all the different things. It does, the, the picture of the iPad, that is actually a picture of, if, if you have a call, what it kind of looks like. The Community Connect, which we'll all get to, scheduling, options for better management. So, major improvements, if you look at the bottom one, that's our currently, our schedule, I'm not, they got all pushed together. So, our scheduling, if you look at the bottom left, I guess it's left on, yeah, I'm looking at, bottom left is what our current schedule looks like, that we are using today. And then the bottom right is what the, an actual picture from First Do for our pre-planning software. So, these are all the modules, CAD, and scheduling assistant, and then information availability for pre-planned inspections, so.
So, service to customers, is there a customer service module, I'm trying to catch that?
Yeah.
Or where would it be in one of those modules?
Where would what be?
Earlier you said customer, and what I'm getting at is, I'd really like to see software that measures customer satisfaction, or develops a plan for that, or gets that.
Okay, so.
More strongly in our process, and it's probably in training, or where is it?
It would probably be in the community risk reduction and Community Connect.
Okay.
That's where those, I believe those are going to be, so, so if we, I guess.
Where's Community Connect, I think Community Risk Reduction.
I believe Community Connect is tied into the community risk reduction, it's all one module. So, it, I, I'm going to pause, you can correct, so you want us to be able to get customer feedback on our responses, inspections, and those kind of things, is that, is that what I'm asking?
Yeah, I, I, I wanted, as councilman, to emphasize this next year's community service and measurement of customer satisfaction to some degree, that's one thing I think we need to work on.
Okay.
The other question I have is, your, when it, this slide says CAD.
Yep, it's the integration into our current CAD.
It has its own contained module for CAD, or do we need to buy that?
It's all included to, to, to make the interface with our current CAD.
Okay. Now, CAD, this CAD is probably different than what you're talking about.
CAD is our computer-aided dispatch.
Yeah, if you guys are telling me that we have the stuff and we need to currently operate this, am I hearing that?
Yeah.
Because the, the, the Autodesk is the most common provider for computer-aided drafting software.
This is computer-aided dispatch. This is our dispatching CAD, I apologize, yeah.
That's okay, okay, I'm sorry. I'm going fast and I'm trying to keep up.
I know, and I apologize, if you need me to slow down, but I, in the effort of-
All right, that's fine, go fast.
So, this is-
I'll get sticked off the peanut if we don't.
So, if you look at this slide over on the right, that is an actual picture from First Do with all of the information that we can put on there. It allows for, and I have a actual better picture, so people, pets, tornadoes, it comes up in thumbnails that are across the bottom, that they can hit to see if they have pets and all of those things, it would come up on the computer as we're responding. And then it shows you a picture of the house and where a lot we can put in there, so the one fifty-eight on the backside is- So, the 158 on the backside is the hose link that it would take to get from the street into the back door. And we can add how long a hose will need to go from truck to hydrant. Knox boxes, FDICs, or FDCs, all of that critical information comes up on a screen like that, that's a push button that they can just click on. So, this is another picture of basically our pre-plan. So, everybody recognizes the building, I hope. This tells you, on the picture to the left, it shows the green highlighted box for the box door that's over there. It shows the stairs where the Knox boxes are, the FDCs. It shows a pool. And then on the bottom picture, when you click on it, it shows the basement section of where everything is in the basement of the building, so it comes tiered. So, it's not something that you're just looking at one big blob, you can actually look at all the tiers. And then another one, the top right, is how we pre-plan this house with the information that we had. That's a blown-up version of the picture you saw in the last one, with the 158 feet of hose that it would take to get into the back door of the house. So, we can do quality pre-plans with this. The Community Connect here supports our mission for them, connects us to those we serve. This is where you can get in each person. Now, we have to verify it, so it's not just like, Councilman Bliss, I can go and put the information for your house.
Yeah, I think that's, I'm in a pre-meeting and I think that's a really good.
Yeah, so we would have to verify it before we allow it to go into the system.
We could have information about people that have oxygen in their lungs.
Right, or bullets, or anything like that, that have larger, and this is all back-facing, so this is not public-facing. So, anything that a community member puts on this system is not available to the general public. It's not something they go on a website and see, or they can access the system and see. Correct, correct. And then it also has the Community Connect for the business side of it as well. So, if a business owner wants to go in and put whatever information, added information they want to put in there that are outside of our regular inspections, they can do so. And then it will also send an alert to that business owner to whatever they wanted to go to, an email, a text message, or anything like that, to their, that we are responding to their address.
Well, I'm hopeful that somewhere in here, there is a comment area where the Community Connect by giving us constructive clues.
I will get back with you on that, I'm not sure if it has, it has that option or not.
Okay.
But I will get back to you on it.
Okay, are the records created by the, this might be one for Council. Are the records created by the Community Connect program sunshineable records?
I don't, I don't believe so.
I'm emailing Mr. Nicholas. Wow, stuff happens.
And I will, I will check with First Do as well, I will email our rep first thing in the morning on that. We were told it was a security that, I guess technically by law, if they sunshine it, they can, but it's just a member of the general public can't, what they're saying is it's secure enough where you just can't log into the website and see his house, or his house, or my house. I would assume everything technically that we do as city government is sunshineable, with some redaction.
Maybe not, I mean, if it's personally, I don't have an answer off the top of my head. I'm asking if I could.
So, going into our scheduling, the scheduling module on it, so basically, if you look at this picture, this is everything that our personnel have to do to make a schedule every month. The bottom-left corner is basically what our schedules look like, and those are our personnel. E2, T2, E1, or E4, those are the trucks that they're on, whether they're on vacation or whatever. They have to look at the top calendar to figure out if they're on vacation, they have to look at the current calendar that they're working on, and then the bottom one is the overtime list that they have to try to update. The First Do puts this all into one module and it does it all for us. So, it will improve our efficiency on incident reports, our computer-aided dispatch. Mr. Mayor, I believe you still have Active 911 on your phone? This, we're, so we currently have Active 911 on my phone, a lot of my members have it. It's a third-party system that whenever we get dispatched to a call, it comes to our phone. First Do has it as, is a feature that is already incorporated into it, so it's not an additional cost. Basically, it's $15 for every one of our people to have what they have now, and that's an annual basis, so they wouldn't have to, they wouldn't have to pay for that, it comes already loaded in the system. So, our CAD module integration will save us 450 hours annually, because it really basically starts the report for us, gives us our call type, the address, the time of call, all of that. It auto-generates a report for us. We just have to go in and fill our narratives in. Our fire inspections, we, you know, we use our third-party, the Compliance Inns in Bryser. This integrates into it already, so everything comes in from Bryser for sprinkler systems, smoke detectors, hood systems, it automatically updates in our inspection modules already. Yes, sir?
So, this is going to help us with this Bryser.
Yes.
Program, where we've had some high-risk situations.
Yes.
That just didn't match, that's really.
Yes, and this should eliminate that. And some of the questions, and some of the issues that I believe you're speaking of, and I think we had a conversation on this, is that some of our strip malls, the sprinkler system is, the boxes in one, one business, but when we first implemented it, every, every address in that strip mall was given a different address with a sprinkler system. So, we ran into that issue that we were getting businesses that are like, hey, it says my sprinkler system is out of service or is needing inspection, I don't have a sprinkler system, they do, it's just monitored in a different business.
I had to talk about that, I had to talk about hood systems where they, hood inspection people weren't getting things posted. And, you know, we have some growing pains with Bryser.
Yeah, so Bryser won't update our system if that, if that third-party contractor still doesn't upload it into Bryser, we won't get it, but as soon as they upload it to Bryser, then it automatically uploads into our occupancy module on our reporting software. And it currently does not now.
So, what I'm hoping is, is that if there is a glitch with Bryser and things don't get loaded properly, this will give us the ability to go, wait a minute.
Yes.
I can answer that person's question, and I can verify that they are in compliance, even though it's not coming directly through Bryser, or it gives you a tool to go out to the community. Okay, good, good, thank you.
So, why now? Basically, with the NEARIS system coming online, if we, if we don't move away from our current reporting software, we have to do that within, I think, 30 days to cancel that service, or we auto-renew. So, we need to make notifications of them that we don't want their service after the 1st of April. And it has increased life safety for both our first responders and our citizens, because we can pre-plan, do quality pre-planning, and then people can tell us where they're at. Any questions?
Uh, in the past, we have helped with changing addresses, hopefully in northeast of there.
Changing addresses, yes, sir.
Are you having problems finding addresses?
No. And to be quite honest with you, our drivers, we have a very rigorous driver, driving training program. Although I would really like to see all the addresses be corrected and moved through. As an emergency services, my guys know where those wrong addresses are pretty well. And, I mean, it is not something that is at the top of my plate right now to do.
One thing, as far as what it means to the customer, by the way, good job putting all that together. The incident plan, it's not only something that we use, but I know I see quite often we get records requests from the insurance company.
Mm-hmm.
So, every time you have a fire, that incident report gets reported to them, so that helps them.
Yep, yeah. And what we can do is go by our general knowledge, so if we, if we're going to a house that may, may be a horror situation, we can put our, we can go into the system and put an alert into the system so that the next crew going knows to be careful, or if it's on fire, we have those information. We can put our own information in there as well, the public doesn't just have to give it to us. And, yeah, and it helps everybody.
Yeah, because when it's full of smoke, you can't see all that, right?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And you can access this on a truck, or in your.
I can access it off my phone, an iPad, a tablet, the computers on the trucks. They give us, so, and I'm not trying to get down in the weeds with you guys, but they give us a generic login for each one of our trucks, so it stays on the computer, stays open all the time. So, anytime there's a fire call or a medical call, it's already on the system. As soon as they get it, all they got to do is go push the button and it pulls up all the.
As they're going out, it starts feeding them information about the caller, about.
Yeah, and it is a better system, because it is an app-based system, so it fits on your phone. If I try to open up my emergency reporting now, it's this big on my little screen and it's really, I mean, so, it's basically an app for all the computers in your phone.
Chief, is there other, is there other fire departments in other communities going to this new system?
Yes, Warrensburg just moved over this, and is in the process of moving over it. There are a number of fire departments that were on emergency reporting that have, are going to First Do.
And they seem very happy?
Yes, they do, yes, they do. And I believe we can share information, is that correct, with those departments? So, we can share information with Warrensburg, and Warrensburg can share their information with us if they so choose.
Any other questions, County? Having heard that, call for reading the ordinance?
Bill number 2023-226. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for report management solutions for the Sidelia Fire Department.
Take a reading. Second. Any council discussion on the motion for second reading? Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Bill number 2023-226. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for report management solutions for the Sidelia Fire Department.
Final passage, second. Any council discussion regarding final passage of this ordinance? Having heard that, full call, please.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
Public safety proudly announced a doubleheader this evening.
Chief, we're going to come up and give you the same kind of presentation.
Well, good evening. Tonight I have with me Commander David Wohley, he is our senior commander, and he's going to start off the presentation. He does a lot of this part during our Citizens Police Academy, so it makes sense for him to show it to you.
Good evening. Thank you all for allowing me to come in and talk about our services and successes of this year. I'm going to break this down into three focal areas, which are going to be of our services. Our police services, our community services, and our training. And in our training, I may even get a chance to talk about our state-of-the-art force-on-force simunitions that I believe referred to as little training guns that you might have heard earlier. So, to start with, we're going to talk about our law enforcement services, which is our Uniform Patrol. So, that's the officers that you see out in the fully-marked patrol cars in uniform that do the lion's share of our police response and our police operations. They handle everything from traffic stops to domestic disturbances to robberies. Anything that happens on the road, then they are typically the ones that are responding to that. And so far this year, we are over 30,000 calls for service that are initially handled by patrol. And those are legitimate police calls, not phone calls or anything like that. They're either calls for service or traffic stops to get to that number. And then the investigations, which is our latent investigation unit, which is our regular detectives that handle everything, any investigation that goes beyond the scope of what the patrol officers have a chance to do, then the latent investigations unit would do. So, if it's an extended investigation of theft, all the way up to homicide, they would handle that along with potentially help from the Criminal Resolution Unit if it was a significant crime. Our traffic and DWI unit is, the DWI unit is fairly new as far as being its own unit. And working with the traffic unit, we have reduced our serious accident and fatality accidents at 23% in the last three years, which is fairly significant of an accomplishment, and we're very proud of that. Our drone unit has, currently we have six pilots, and each of our drone operators have to actually get a pilot's license for the drone. We have currently six pilots and three officers that are getting their pilot's license. And we have three drones that we use, I'll keep this pretty short on that. The first one, as you all would be most concerned, is the most expensive one. It has the thermal capabilities, the 200 zoom, the night mode, and that's, that's kind of the lion's share of what gets most that we use on our surveillance, if we're doing search warrants for intel on things like that, we might use that. And then we have the mini-drone, which has some of the capabilities of the bigger one, doesn't cost near as much money. So, when we have these six pilots and our three new pilots, this is what they learn on. They're not learning on the most expensive drone. And then we also have a first-person view drone, where the operator wears goggles and they see exactly what the drone sees. And we can utilize this on search warrants if we have, just as examples, if we have like a crawl space that we cannot get in, or that isn't safe to get in, we can send the drone in to make sure that that's clear if we have an attic that doesn't have easy access, but we think that maybe something's hidden up there, we could use that drone to fly up and actually see what's in that area. We have used that drone on calls of barricaded subjects, where we can actually see what's in the windows, and the officer does, we don't have to have an officer go up and, or a team to go up and try and get that information. If something happens to that drone, it's a lot better to replace that than personnel, clearly. So, that's our drone unit. Our K9 unit, we currently have two multi-use Canines. They, they're narcotics detection, defense dogs, they can also track. So, we try and, try and get as much out of those resources as we can. School resource officer, we have a, an officer who works in the Fidelia Junior High. He's full-time there, but he also performs investigations for the other schools, for elementary schools. If they have a need for an officer, then he is dedicated to our school system and will go and help them with whatever problems we can. Our special response team is designed for high-risk situations. They're specially trained and specially equipped to deal with those situations. And that's, that's a team that is continuing to grow and develop. And it's ancillary duty that I believe we currently have, I believe 12 or 13 officers that are assigned to that. And our bicycle unit, we've had a bicycle unit, we had that many years ago, and our bikes got old and outdated, and the bicycle unit kind of took a back burner. And with the influence of a, of a citizen who's present, we were able to secure some grants. And we have four regular, like pedaled type of bikes, they're very quality bikes that the officers use, and we have two e-bikes that they can use as well. And we typically send those out into teams, I'm sure if you've been to the parade, you've seen them. We try and do a heavy focus on the Katy Trail as well, and other areas that we target that we want a quiet and more of a, kind of a hands-on response. So, moving on to our community services, this, one of our greatest assets is our relationship with the community. And this is one of the areas that we maintain those relationships and those interactions. And I don't have a number of how many community services we have done this year. It has been a lot, and I know that we've had, we've had weekends that we just didn't even have anyone available to go because we were already doing so many of them. Those were rare, but we, we take pride in the fact that we get asked to do a lot of those, because we definitely enjoy doing them. And some of the things that you're seeing here are, the top one on the left is our Citizens Police Academy graduates. And the one on the bottom was a community block party at Taylor Chapel Methodist Church. And then the one on the right on the bottom is our drone coloring program, or art contest that Officer Cameron developed. So, we have the, we try and, we try and do as much community engagement as we can. Our DARE program is clearly a longtime staple of the Sidelia Police Department. The drone and art contest is new, and our social media outreach is also a very good way that we reach the community and get interaction on how we're doing. And then, this next slide is, is just going to be kind of a sampling, I'm not going to go over all of these, but the Citizens Police Academy. I'm not gonna go over all of these, but the Citizens Police Academy, we have, uh, we've revamped our Citizens Police Academy and this is our third year of doing it. This is by far our largest class. I think we had over around twenty-five students that, that graduated this year, which is a considerable, um, time investment for the community to come and do that, and we definitely appreciate it. We have some graduates, three graduates in here tonight of our Citizens Police Academy. And definitely, definitely happy to see them. The Sedalia, or the Drone Art Contest, we discussed. We, uh, I believe there were twenty-one drones that we gave out. We had three winners per school and trophies that, uh, that Officer Cameron had gotten and, and given to kids that, uh, that won in those competitions. Uh, our DARE, uh, DARE class, we graduated over three hundred students in DARE last year between the Sedalia Two Hundred Schools and, and the private schools that we teach DARE. We also have the DARE camp that Officer Carr has, has established where we reward graduates that want to come and spend a day with us. This year, we, uh, we were at the, uh, the leisure golf with the go-karts and, and miniature golf at the park and then skating again, and we had over fifty kids this year that came and, and took part in that, which, which was our most successful year of that as well. Drone demonstrations with the schools, just kind of go through these so you guys aren't here all night. If you have any questions on any of these, please feel free to ask as well as we go through. All of the parades, and again, this is, uh, this is a sampling of, of what we've done. Again, our, uh, our relationship with the community is, is one of our, one of our most important focuses. And the third focus that I want to talk about tonight is our training. And our, uh, our training unit, we currently have over twenty officers that are Missouri Post certified to be training officers. So, they not only train us, but we train other agencies as well in the profession. We provide that training for free so that, uh, so that they can also get their education hours that they need to keep their certification to be a police officer. So, some of the areas that we've had this year for training, two years ago, all of, all the sergeants and all of command staff took, uh, took part in the West Point Leadership Model of Training, which is a three-week, uh, leadership-intensive course. It's, uh, it was designed by, or through the West Point model that the military uses to train its officers, and it was designed towards law enforcement from the, uh, the company that, that came in and the, and the instructors that came in and taught us this. And ever since we've had new sergeants that have been promoted, we've had three and we have sent them through the course as well. And then just, uh, about a week and a half ago, we had everybody come back together and we did a two-day refresher course. And this course is, is designed to, uh, define and implement successful leadership practices and methodologies. And they, it kind of helps your department, if you haven't done it already, establish what your culture is, what you believe in, the direction you're headed. And it brings all of your supervisors and your leadership staff together to head, head towards that direction in unity and, and accomplish those goals. So, since we weren't all able to go together, we wanted to do kind of a, a two-day refresher to go over for, for those of us that have been a couple of years in, and the new sergeants, that, that we can all be on the same page, take those, take that time and, and move forward. So, it's, it's been a, it's been a very informative and educational system, and we have definitely seen the, the fruits from, from doing that. Another area that I wanted to discuss is our radar training for all officers. And Chief Worf, or not Chief Worf, Chief, Chief Erwin spoke about the, uh, the kind of calls that we all dread to hear. This is, uh, this is for the, the more high-intensive, active shooter type of call. And every police officer that we have at our department went through this where we actually did utilize our state-of-the-art force-on-force munitions along with live-fire. It's, uh, it's a very intensive course as well, but unfortunately, it's a, it's a necessary evil that you have to prepare for. And, and all of our officers have been certified in this program. Also, our EVOC, which is Emergency Vehicle Operation Course Driver Training. We have two instructors in our department that can teach the EVOC course. And that, uh, that definitely helps with our response time and, and handling a, a vehicle at high speeds and, and, uh, in hazardous areas. So, that's, uh, that was also something that is new for us to have instructors in, that we don't have to pay other instructors to come and train us or, or us travel to them and still get that training. Our regional CIT training, I think everybody's familiar with the CIT program, Crisis Intervention Training. All of our officers are certified. We teach CIT every spring to, uh, to all mid-Missouri departments that want to come and take that training for free. Also, medical staff, whoever is interested that can benefit from Crisis Intervention Training, we train them at the Sedalia Police Department for free. Our specialized crime scene and investigation training. Anytime a detective comes in, that we make sure that they're, they're trained in, uh, basic crime scene investigation, homicide investigation, all the tools that they're gonna need to be successful. Along with forecasting, officers that have a, have a desire to learn that specialized training, even if they're not in investigations, we'll, we'll look at, at drawing them in if, if that's something that they want to do to, to increase their skills on, on where they're at. And last is our in-service training. And real quickly, our, our in-service training we do twice a year. We do every spring and every fall. The, uh, I spoke about POST earlier, which is Police Officer Standards and Training. That's basically the, the entity that gives me a license to be a police officer. And POST mandates that I have to have twenty-four hours a year of, of continuing education training. They don't really specify on how, whether it's by the computer, if I'm doing it online, or whether it's, you know, actually in a class doing hands-on training. Our in-service training, we more than double just at the bare minimum what POST requires. So, we do fifty-six training hours a year, and that's actually people in the seats, hands-on training. We do some online training, but that's not what's included in our in-service. So, we, we more than double that, and it's, it's progressive training that builds each year after year and brings our new people up to speed so that, so that we're prepared to handle situations as they arise on the street. So, with that, that is our kind of year's sum-up of what we've done. So, if anybody, does anyone have any questions? If not, I'll turn it over to Chief Worf.
Yes, sir.
With the new fence, uh, put around the, uh, Junior High?
Mm-hmm.
When it's, uh, when it's open, is there a security watching that all the students come through there?
They, they have, uh, they have a security officer at the Junior High and they have Officer Carr at the Junior High where, where he works full-time. And I, I do know that they watch that. It is locked most of the time. I think, uh, probably when school lets out, that there are times that they, they open it up. But they have, uh, they have cameras on all the exterior as well. And I know, I've been in both of their offices and they always have all of the cameras up if they're not, you know, eyes on watching it at the time, but that is definitely monitored. And the, and the exterior doors are always locked to the school as well.
You provided the CIT training to the general public earlier this year.
Yes, sir.
Do you receive a good enough response to be able to bring that back to the general public?
We, uh, we usually do receive a, a positive response from that. And we offer it, I mean, it's, it, initially it was a lot more law enforcement, but now, most of the agencies, at least our agency is completely certified, so it leaves more room to open that up to, to folks.
I was aware of a few nonprofits that, that, I didn't know if we were gonna be able to bring that back.
Yes, sir. Yeah, well, uh, we will teach it again in the spring. Detective Cherry, uh, designs that and, and puts it on. And we have, uh, three or four officers that, that are instructors in there as well and are learning to do what Mark does on it, which is, yeah, it's, it's, did they enjoy the program?
They absolutely did. They've been to a lot, and as you know, I'm a huge advocate of that program.
Yes, sir.
How, how long is that training? Many hours?
CIT is forty. And we, uh, Mark actually broke-
Is it a week worth of training, basically, or more?
Correct. And, and Mark broke it up. The, the State of Missouri always did it Monday through Friday. And when you're trying to staff a police department, especially if you don't have a, a great overtime budget like we enjoy, you know, you, you can't just take someone off the street for a full week to go do that. So, we, we break it up into one day a week. And then it's a five-week program, doing it that way on, on Tuesday, I believe, normally, 'cause that's kind of the easiest day to get folks in. So, yeah, we, uh, we've, we've done that for several years now. We kind of partner with Warrensburg and they, they teach a fall session there.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Can somebody kind of crippled in their back, can, could I go through the Citizens Academy?
Absolutely. Yes, you can. We have, uh, we had twenty-five student, uh, twenty-five students this year. A lot of them were, uh, were elderly, which they, uh, they make, you know, they make up a great part of, of our community and, and come in and, and really enjoy it. A few of them I'd bring chairs to when we'd go out to like-
Flyer Walker?
Yeah.
I would, that's something on my bucket list I would like to do.
Oh, well-
And then the other question, this is just me asking, how much of the police department pays for the resource officer, for the school?
The, uh, the school pays the salary of the, of the resource officer.
That's what I was wondering. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, Counsel?
Yeah, there's, there's a little bit. We do a contract with them. They, they offset the majority of the costs. Of course, we provide the car.
And the equipment.
So, it, it, it offsets the majority, or basically the officer's salary, but the other expenses, um, we, we support. But the way I look at it and the way I recommend to you all as far as the resource allocation, it's part of our, our community, so we should be doing that anyway.
Well, I agree. I, I mean, I just think they ought to share it because I, I just went down, Mayville and I went down today and paid our personal property tax.
Mm-hmm.
And twelve hundred of the seventeen hundred we paid was for the Sedalia Two Hundred School District. And I ain't had kids in there for a long time.
Sure.
So, I, I think, I think that, that's something that should be shared.
Sir.
Thank you, Commander Woolley.
Thank you.
Okay, so we talked, uh, quite a bit about what we do and why we do it. And obviously, people are one of the main reasons that we do, uh, our job every day. Uh, with that, what we're gonna talk about in our strategic plan this year is how, not only will we talk about people, but how we can do more with less. So, as, some of the things that have already been talked about tonight is that, um, we use a, a piece of software that is, um, uh, used in all of our dispatching. So, Dispatch has a, has a computer-aided dispatch. And that information goes to mobile software, which is in each one of our police cars and the fire trucks and the ambulances and the sheriff's department cars. The ability for all of public safety to share that information. So, what we're looking about doing is plugging in other modules that interact with that to make us more efficient. Our use of technology innovation provides efficiency through the use of new tools to do more tasks in less time. The less time that an officer has to take, uh, on a call, because the calls are getting more complicated. There's a lot more information to gather. The reports are more complicated. So, the, the more that we can make them faster, but also accurate, obviously, we save time and we save money and we get them on to the next call faster. So, this software also helps to improve safety and efficiency for law enforcement officers. And it also allows command staff to be able to view what is going on in a real, uh, real time. What this is, is this is software that, um, is taking our mobile software and putting it into an app on a phone. Each one of the cars is equipped with a cell phone. We call it the orange phone, 'cause I made them put big, bright screen protectors and, or, uh, protectors on them so no one would take the wrong phone home, uh, at night. But that phone is kind of a lifeline to the car. This software then allows the officer to, to take mobile with them on the call. Right now, it's just in the police car. So, when they get out and away from that computer, they don't have access to all the information that they do in the car. They are, then at that point with that phone, they can have the call information instantly accessible to them without returning to the car. They can also get alerts to dangers such as arrest warrants, hazardous materials. And they can, it allows them to have some situational awareness to it. It also allows them to, uh, access data that is in our system. A lot of times, it's difficult. Um, if there's another incident happening, say there's a traffic accident, fire, EMS, and other officers are at that traffic accident and you're on a call, it's sometimes difficult to get through because everybody else is busy. So, that gives you the opportunity to use this app to obtain information about the call quickly. So, that, again, that's it in a nutshell, and it provides that type of information quickly. One of the other modules that we would like to, to add in there is our public safety analytics. We have been working on a lot of data for some of the different grants that we have applied for here in the city. And a lot of that is involved around traffic accidents. Mining our data, harvesting our data has become a little bit of an issue as our software and some of our modules get older. So, it is always important for our agency to analyze the data that we harvest because it has the capability to answer questions that we don't see on a daily basis. Using analytical software, you can pull those, that, that information out there. And it also adds a, a convenient and easy access to it. And it can provide insight to vital and improve safety as we become more effective and efficient. This software allows us to bring out everything that you can think of in our data. One of the things that we've been doing, again, is on accident data and looking for probable contributing circumstances to provide for, um, an engineer working on a grant. That took weeks to get that information out of our current system. So, uh, my assistants spent weeks and weeks and weeks pulling that data, trying to combine it in together, together to just give to the engineer. This would have done that same thing in a matter of minutes. So, we literally are saving time and money by, uh, using the software. It also allows for some of the, the operations that I like to use with looking for problems in our community and trying to solve them. When you can see those problems in a trend, you can see those problems coming at you before you realize them, you know, that's an added bonus to the software. But it's a powerful tool that we can work on with neighborhoods and problems as we see those hotspots or those activity areas increase. It's also a visual. Um, we all like to look at maps and it's easier to look at if we see those hotspots. The next side of things is, uh, what we call Data Collect. And again, this is all integrated into our mobile software. Data Collects allows us to, uh, use digital documentation that fuels activity tracking and the ease of summation of work. So, we're gonna eliminate human error and legibility issues. Police officers don't write well either. It allows them to use that same phone to collect data. One of the examples might be, a lot of times, of course, in this visual world, we take pictures on calls. Right now, we would take those with a digital camera. We would take them back to the police station. We would download those, put those on a computer, and then upload them into our system. With this piece of software, and this is just one of the many things that this software can do, is that we would take that picture and load it into the case. Take a picture of a document, load it into the case. I say load it into the case, that's where we store everything, for our records, man, records management. Obviously, we're eliminating a lot of time there. We're eliminating the possibility of error. Um, and we're just making things more efficient and allowing us to, to, to share information much quicker within our department and potentially anyone that is tied within the public safety network to this software and the, the entities that I mentioned earlier. Uh, the final part of that, uh, of this module is our electronic crash module. The state has given us some, an entirely new accident diagram, or accident, uh, report for this year, which we are working with our current vendor to get that compliant as quick as possible. But it brought about that our current accident module, uh, they have announced it's in the support. And our, our software company wants us to move to this. There's a lot of benefits to that. The first being that the state is moving towards tying grant funding to us providing our accident reports electronically, which we don't currently do. This would allow us to submit those, uh, those informa, or those reports to the state through our records division electronically. Also, if we can have our officer spend less time on the side of the road collecting data with the ability to scan and import driver and vehicle data seamlessly, we can save time. Right now, if an officer shows up for an accident, say it's a three-car accident, there's three people in each car, he's gotta collect every single person's information. Now imagine he can take that same cell phone and scan their information into the call. The amount of time that saves, we're providing a better service to the public 'cause those accidents usually happen when it's pouring rain and we've blocked the highway on Memorial Weekend. So, we're getting, we're, we're providing that better service to the community. We're getting the information we need. They can move on and we can get off the road and get the roadway cleared faster. We don't like to keep the roadway blocked. I'm talking to you, Chief. Information sharing is also simple and only needs to be gathered once, saving time and improving accuracy. So, again, collecting that information one time. Many years ago, we had problems with, uh, different types of data- Uh, many years ago, we had problems with, uh, different types of data that we were collecting, and it would be re-entered four times. This is one of those situations where right now, we're entering some of this data three times. The ability to cut those entries down and enter it one time obviously creates efficiency. Um, so along with that, of course, so that's our service inside of things, but we also want to look at our people. It is very, very important for us to hire the best people we can. Um, through that, we need to work on our recruitment retention. Every year I bring this up, because every year it is very important. Um, we are very, uh, picky, in a sense, about who we hire. Our goal is to hire quality people. Um, we ought to protect that investment through providing highly competitive employee package for our police officers. We want to continue our hiring incentive program and paying for police, uh, police academies, because we want to hire the right person. And if that means that we have to send them through training in the police academy, it's worth it, because we get that right person. To protect that investment, we currently have contracts to make sure that they spend enough time with us, that they pay back that contract, in a sense. Um, but people, again, are our greatest asset, and they also work to solve community problems. With that, um, with that solving our problems, you've got to have the right people that have that desire and that they feel like they're, that this, this job is a calling. Um, we also want to continue with programs that provide career growth, building our leadership team, and we want to establish a professional culture. You guys have also heard about some of the training programs, the leadership programs that we're providing. We want to continue that and make that a part of our culture and a part of our department. Um, one of the, uh, the other things to work with the community is also looking at a couple of, of pieces of technology, again, with innovation. Um, there's a device out there that can detect if gunshots are fired, that can differentiate between fireworks and gunshots. If we can place those at strategic locations in the city, we can enhance our ability to quickly respond to these accident, active incidents. It is, uh, is very, very, uh, impressive how accurate these devices can be. Um, and they can work with us on, on propagation maps to put those in the right places. Um, also, the use of license plate recognition placed in strategic locations to track vehicles involved in illegal drug and criminal enterprise. We can put those in, in locations with that being what we want to use those for. And those can be shared throughout law enforcement, shared with agencies in the community, um, and shared with other law enforcement around the United States. We all know that people that traffic drugs or are involved in some sort of criminal enterprise, they don't just stay in one jurisdiction. They move about either the city, the county, or the state, or even the, the country. So being able to track them, know where they are, and use that as a resource with our, our, uh, our drug units is highly valuable. There's also the possibility of placing, uh, community or neighborhood-based cameras in high criminal activity locations. Through the use of these cameras, um, we can have the resources and also the, the technology and the evidence through the, what this camera records to be able to go back and look at and, uh, use that evidence and that, uh, that video to solve crimes. Um, and that would be, law enforcement only would be able to, to, uh, to view those cameras and, uh, have that recording. Obviously, we would put in place policies and procedures and follow any, uh, uh, state laws that govern those. We also, uh, finally want to continue our community service and engagement. You heard quite a bit about what we're doing. We're going to keep continuing to do that. Um, every time that an officer feels like their job isn't worth what they're doing, I always encourage them to go to these events, because it reminds you of what you do, why you do it. Um, spending time, like, for example, the lower picture is at our, their graduation. We've got Citizens Police Academy and a community event there. Um, those engage the public. We're building relationships, they're building relationships. And even the use of social media, we establish public trust, and then folks help us solve crimes. You know, our, our community is the eyes and ears of, of, of what we do. Um, that relationship and that, that feedback that we receive from them helps us to know what the community finds important. What do they want us to enforce? What do they want us to focus on? So finally, a couple of takeaways from all of this is the use of innovative technology to do more with less, allowing technology to improve the efficiency of our officers. Of course, we want to keep that community engagement to help build relationships and solve crime. We all want to, want to identify, recruit, and retain officers with the interpersonal skills necessary to foster relationships within the community. Hopefully, that sums it up, and I'll take any questions if anyone has them.
Any questions, Colonel?
Thank you, Wood.
All right, thank you.
We have to talk about an ordinance for the radio purchase. You want, I will attend there.
Sure, sure.
Bit of radio purchase that we need to make.
Okay.
We need an ordinance.
Yep, we have a, uh, resolution and ordinance in relation to this purchase. We'll call for the reading of the resolution first.
Resolution two thousand seventy-one. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, thank you.
Any this council discussion regarding the purchase of these?
These are the dual-band radio.
Right, so we, we applied for two different grants, um, to purchase, uh, police car radios. We're replacing a very aging fleet of radios. And of course, we have a lot of, uh, of radios, they're very expensive. And so these two grants allow us to purchase four radios.
Thank you. Anything further, counsel? All those in favor? All those opposed? Resolution passes. Call for the reading of the ordinance in relation to this purchase.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, two twenty-seven. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four and approving quotes for police radio purchases.
Second reading?
Second. Any council discussion regarding the second reading? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, two twenty-seven. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four and approving codes for, quotes for police radio purchases.
Final passage?
Second. Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this ordinance? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson, yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you, Chairman Robinson. Next, we have public works. Chairman Oldham, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. All right, folks, it's down to the elements from here. Here we go. Our first item I have tonight is an agreement for our tree re-inventory. And council meetings passed, we focused on the receiving of, uh, our TRIM grant. Uh, we have sent out bids for that grant, and for tonight, we award the bid, an agreement with the bid, to Arbor Pro for seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy cents for our tree re-inventory.
All right, call for the reading of the ordinance authorizing the agreement.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, two twenty-eight. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for a tree re-inventory of approximately two thousand six city park and right-of-way trees.
Second reading?
Thank you.
Any council discussion regarding the second reading? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, two twenty-eight. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for a tree re-inventory of approximately two thousand six city park and right-of-way trees.
Final passage?
Second. Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this ordinance? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
All in favor.
Second item I have tonight will consist of a resolution and an ordinance. Uh, it is a budget amendment and approval of a new job description. And though I was not in the last council meeting to hear Director Dodson's strategic planning presentation, I'm sure he brought this up at that time. So as a part of the ongoing strategy for offsetting the operational costs of the airport within, with user fee, Director Dodson has developed a rental plan agreement along with a flight instruction program. And as part of the implementation, staff pulled together a recommended, recommended job description and budget amendments for the flight instructor for your, for our consideration.
All right, we have a resolution ordinance in relation to this matter. Call for the read of the resolution first.
Resolution two thousand seventy-two. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve?
Second. Any council discussion regarding the resolution that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes. Call for the reading of the ordinance in relation to this matter.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, two twenty-nine. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four and adding a new classification and job description regarding airport flight instructor and plane rental.
Second reading?
Second. All right, any council discussion regarding the second reading of this ordinance? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, two twenty-nine. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four and adding a new classification and job description regarding airport flight instructor and plane rental.
Final passage?
Thank you. Uh, any council discussion regarding the final passage of this ordinance? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
All in favor.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Chairman Oldham. Uh, next, we have community development. Chairman Foster, Chairwoman Foster, my apologies, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Uh, I have two items this evening, the first of which is annexation of Highway H Property LLC. At the last meeting, a public hearing was held to hear comments about the appropriateness of an annexation position for property along HH at the north edge of town owned by Highway H Properties LLC. No comment was received during the hearing, nor since then. Now that the time period required, uh, after the hearing is passed, council can consider an ordinance to annex the property into the city.
Call for the read in the ordinance, uh, annexing the property owned by Highway H Properties LLC.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, two thirty. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by Highway H Property LLC into the City of Sedalia, Missouri adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city.
Second reading?
Second. Any council discussion regarding the second reading of this ordinance? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, two thirty. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by Highway H Property LLC into the City of Sedalia, Missouri adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city.
Final passage?
Second. Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this ordinance? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
All in favor.
The second item I have this evening is an amendment to the code, or animal code. Uh, staff has worked with legal to revamp our code section dealing with animal control. This comprehensive rewrite greatly simplifies the code, making it easier to understand and apply. After adoption of the new code, it has come to our attention that there have been, there were a couple of fixes needed. First, the new code allows certain animals to be kept in areas zoned agricultural, while the zoning code does not contain provisions to zone areas as agricultural. There are not any such areas with a zoning designation. Thereby, the revised code giving reference to agriculture zones would have the effect of prohibiting keeping any animals that were intended to be allowed. Therefore, this revision removes the reference, uh, to agriculture zoning. To revise the method to allow the animal to be allowed, second, the Planning and Zoning Commission noticed there was a reference to allowing private stables in zoning codes, which created conflict in language between the zoning code and the new animal control code. This modification deletes that section in the zoning chart.
All right. Call for the reading of the ordinance?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, two thirty-one. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia amending the city code regarding animals.
Second reading?
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the second reading of this ordinance? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, two thirty-one. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia amending the city code regarding animals.
Final passage?
Second. Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this ordinance? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you, Chairman Foster. Uh, in other business, we have liquor licenses. Call for the reading of the liquor license.
We have one renewal license. Adam McMillan doing business as Walmart Store Number Two-Nineteen at thirty-two oh one West Broadway for packaged liquor and Sunday sales.
Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Any council discussion regarding the motion to approve? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Uh, now we have the miscellaneous items from Mayor, City Council, and City Administrator. I'd just like to, uh, congratulate, uh, Councilman Oldham on, uh, the birth of his first child.
Thank you very much. Yay! I wanted to nodding off during your presentation, guys. I'm a little... Anybody have anything else?
Yeah, I would just like to, again, thank the Purnells for their great gift of the, uh, Thanksgiving Day fireworks that they do every year. I think that's a, that's a huge gift to the community, and I, it's greatly appreciated. And then, um, uh, you know, of course, that kicks, kicks off the Christmas season and, um, uh, also our Christmas parade was this, uh, this Saturday, and I thought it was a great parade again. Uh, the weather probably made the crowd a little smaller than it's been in years past, but it's, uh, it was still a great parade and, um...
I want, I want to congratulate the guy to build, to build our flow.
Yeah, yeah. Wasn't many, so I can't take credit for that.
Doug and John?
Yeah.
Thank you. It was awesome.
It, it was really good. I want to apologize for keep coughing. I, I, uh, actually got the deer car out in the rain, and now I'm paying for it. I'm starting to get my little cold. Um, but, uh, it was definitely cold that night with the rain. Um, so anyway, it was a good parade, a lot of participants. And, uh, it was good to see everybody there and seen a lot of, a lot of people. This is my thirty-fourth year doing that parade. They've canceled it twice. I was hoping they didn't cancel it, because last time they canceled it because of the weather, the next weekend, it's, it snowed eleven inches. So, and needless to say, we didn't have a, a parade that year. So it, it turned out okay.
And then finally, I had, uh, I, I want to say thank you to the Haydens. It's my understanding that they, um, they are sponsoring the signs that we see around town. I think they're, they're a great gift, again, to the community.
Yeah, I talked to Bob, uh, Monday. He had his Corvette there. He was supposed to bring his thirty-nine Chevy. He brought the Corvette, because I don't think that thirty-nine Chevy doesn't get wet, okay? And anyway, um, he told me he thought, he felt that, that sign's in a good place right now, because, uh, he feels like there's going to be a lot of families, there are Christmas cards this year, that there's going to be pictures of that sign with their family standing in front of it. So he's pretty proud of that.
I would like to, for us to look into a full-time mayor. I know right now, Mayor Dawson puts in at least thirty, thirty hours a week.
I don't know if you want me, I got a broken leg.
And, uh, for very little pay. And, uh, uh, if it wasn't come true, it wouldn't have come into effect until his term ends. But I, I think we really need a full-time mayor there in Sedalia right now.[1704.18] But I, I think we really need a full-time mayor for Sedalia right now.
So it's a council's pleasure that they put that in, but just recommendation for you all to consider?
Hmm, I don't know, it was my pleasure.
I'll make the motion, just you do it. I mean, I think the time to vote on it is going to be, you know?
Well, we can take a look at that. Anybody have anything else? Okay, now we'll go ahead and open up to the audience. Anybody from the audience that would like to make statements to the council? You got, step to the microphone, you got three minutes, state your name and your address and fire away.
We wore them out. No comment?
Okay, well, we will go ahead and I will entertain a motion to move to...
Motion to move to the first session for legal advice, real estate, personal and negotiated contracts.
Roll call, please.
Robinson, yes. Oldham, yes. Marshall, yes. Bogus, yes. Hiller, yes. Cross, yes. Foster, yes. Bliss, yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I think you better repeat it, sorry. Second. Entertain a motion to second to reopen the regular meeting?
Motion to open.
Roll call, please.
Robinson, yes. Oldham, yes. Marshall, yes. Bogus, yes. Hiller, yes. Cross, yes. Foster, yes. Bliss, yes.
Okay, first item on our agenda is an ordinance approving the special warranty deed for the sale of the property on Sedalia Road from the City of Sedalia, Missouri to Broken Arrow Properties LLC. A call for the reading of that ordinance?
Bill number 2023-232. An ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property on Sedalia Road from the City of Sedalia, Missouri to Broken Arrow Properties LLC, a Missouri limited liability company.
Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion second, the second reading? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number 2023-232. An ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property on Sedalia Road from the City of Sedalia, Missouri to Broken Arrow Properties LLC, a Missouri limited liability company.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Cross, yes. Foster, yes. Bliss, yes. Robinson, yes. Oldham, yes. Marshall, yes. Bogus, yes. Hiller, yes. All in favor.
All right, next item I have is an ordinance approving special warranty deed for the sale of the property at 16 South Ohio. Call for the reading of the ordinance?
Bill number 2023-233. An ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as 916 South Ohio from the City of Sedalia, Missouri to Kruger Properties II, a Missouri limited liability company.
Second reading.
Any council discussion regarding the motion the second? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number 2023-233. An ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as 916 South Ohio Avenue from the City of Sedalia, Missouri to Kruger Properties II, a Missouri limited liability company.
Final passage.
Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this ordinance? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Foster, yes. Bliss, yes. Robinson, yes. Oldham, yes. Marshall, yes. Bogus, yes. Hiller, yes. Cross, yes. All in favor.
Next item I have is an ordinance amending the city code and adding a new classification and job description for assistant city administrator. Call for the reading of the ordinance?
Bill number 2023-234. An ordinance amending city code and adding a new classification and job description for assistant city administrator and a related amendment to an existing job description for city administrator for the City of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second. Any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number 2023-234. An ordinance amending city code and adding a new classification and job description for assistant city administrator and a related amendment to an existing job description for city administrator for the City of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second. Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this ordinance? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Bliss, yes. Robinson, yes. Oldham, yes. Marshall, yes. Bogus, yes. Hiller, yes. Cross, yes. Foster, yes. All in favor.
Next item I have is an ordinance authorizing an agreement between the City of Sedalia, Missouri and Matthew Work. Call for the reading of the ordinance?
Bill number 2023-235. An ordinance authorizing an agreement binding between the City of Sedalia, Missouri and Matthew Work.
Second reading.
Second. Any council discussion regarding the ordinance?
If we could clarify that the, the change will be made to six months severance as opposed to the 12 that was in the, in the agreement that was handed.
Yeah, it will be as amended with six months severance. Uh, let's see, where was I? Had a motion, I had a second, any council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
Bill number 2023-235. An ordinance authorizing an agreement binding between the City of Sedalia, Missouri and Matthew Work.
Final passage.
Second. Any council discussion regarding the final passage of this ordinance? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson, yes. Oldham, yes. Marshall, yes. Bogus, yes. Hiller, yes. Cross, yes. Foster, yes. Bliss, yes. All in favor.
All right, ordinance passes. Next item I have is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sedalia, Missouri consenting and approving the appointment of David Woolery as interim chief police, chief of police for the City of Sedalia, Missouri. Call for agreeing the resolution?
Resolution 2073. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sedalia, Missouri consenting to and approving the appointment of David Woolery as interim chief of police for the City of Sedalia, Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any council discussion regarding the resolution? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, resolution passes. Thank you, counsel. Congratulations. Welcome to your new role. Okay, now I will go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Any council discussion?
Good luck.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, counsel.